Thank you for joining us for this work session. If you would remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Clerk Fontaine, if you could do the roll call, please.
Councilmember John Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Hahn.
Present.
Councilmember Melinda Cox.
Present.
Councilmember Chad Cassidy. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Cassidy is not present tonight. Councilmember Julia Stubel.
Present.
Councilmember Josh Hahn.
Yes.
Mayor White. Let the record reflect that Mayor White is not present.
Thank you, Clerk Fontaine. I'm pleased to see all of you joining us for this work session tonight. I'll remind all of us that how the work sessions work. There's no public comment, but we have added to this agenda a staff update. Given the recent intentions and conversation council has had about wanting to have a more frequent flow of information from staff to council, thought that would be a great way to start increasing that frequency. So we'll start with staff updates and then move on to two other agenda items. Interim Chief Wa, do you have any updates for us?
There's all kinds of things. Moving right along, summer's here. We're, as we've discussed in the last meeting, the amount of traffic that feels like is Lander right now is probably double what we usually feel here. But Brew Fest was pretty low key for us. I think researching through some of the calls and things we took over that weekend, there was only two to maybe three incidents that we could have directly related to Brew Fest, and it was not at Brew Fest. They were events that happened after Brew Fest had closed where people took it upon themselves to continue on or scheduled up, organized, ready for the Fourth of July. As we know, that's our biggest thing. Moving on with training. I think if you remember, one of the things that retired Chief Peters brought up was domestic violence and the lack of domestic violence reporting that happens here. I have three of my staff headed to Rawlins on Thursday, specific for eight hours of domestic violence training. So just trying to identify things like that where we can continue to move forward in our knowledge and how we're taking care of things. We're currently working on our SRO contract. We are operating under still a 2022 to 23 contract. That's being reviewed right now by Adam and the mayor. And so we can get moving forward and make sure we're up to date everywhere we need to be. Outside of that, I'm open for any questions.
Any questions for interim Chief Wa?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Projects are moving along. So as you can see, construction on Lincoln Streets moving down the block. We're seeing the utility work on McFarland Drive getting closer to completion and road should be coming fairly soon. We're seeing the hospital work and the new water line up there taking shape and has passed pressure testing and road work there is base is getting put on and should see asphalt pretty soon as well. And then the sidewalk job on around the Gannet Peak Elementary is just getting kicked off. We did put a requirement in that contract as a, that they must be out of Fifth Street and the construction where we're accessing that building or the parents are accessing that building two weeks prior to school starting. So still trying to make sure that we're looking out for the school being able to operate. Well, if work continues beyond that, hopefully it's a little bit further away from the school and ADA work and sidewalks get completed. Then working way on our designs for upcoming projects. So Baldwin Creek, trying to get that finished up and submitted to YDOT for review. And then wanted to talk a little bit about an agreement that's going to be in front of you in the near future. It's the Cemetery Ditch Agreement with the City of Lander. That's being reworked. And so you guys will see that upcoming. And that's the exchange that we do for water rights from our storage at Worthing. And we end up letting Cemetery Ditch use that water storage in exchange for us using their water right. The reason we do that is because at one point, the Forest Service required us to pay a $10,000, you know, I guess it would be assessment. Anytime that we started using Worthing water and then sold it to our customers because they were looking at it as resale. But if it's being used for ag, which Cemetery Ditch uses it for, then that doesn't exist. So right now, we're in a 40-year term and we think that we have that covered, but we think it's wise to just renew the agreement in case things change federally that we don't see that $10,000 assessment come because we don't build that into our rates or want to have to come up with that money at the drop of storage water having to be used because we're using a lot more down here or something happens. So just wanted to update you on those things that we have going on and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. It's an immense amount of project management right now. Appreciate that. Councilman Larson.
Quick question. How are we doing schedule-wise on these projects?
You know, it's really hard. As far as where we are, the contractors are falling a little bit behind their projected schedules. And so with that, they always have the opportunity to catch up. And we say that's longer working hours, that's weekends. We allow those things per contract or to change their means and methods, such as hiring a second contractor to start in a different spot. So we're still pushing hard to try to have the project wrapped up by the end of the year on Lincoln Street. And it is going to be, how long can we pay? What's the temperature going to be towards the end of the year? And, you know, those sort of things when you're trying to build that much work in one season. So the contractor would say they're not on schedule, but have the ability to catch up. As far as our other projects, I think that we're looking at falling within schedule on those other than the tank and pump station, which is in that substantial completion phase and final completion at this point. So they're still doing punch list items on that tank and pump station job. And we're waiting to advertise on the completion of that project. So all those substantial things are done. It's all the cleanup, the fences going in on the golf course, approach work, seeding that should be done this fall, like the minor things in comparison to the major job.
That reminds me of one other question. They, they took out the cement around the pump house up there by the golf course and then report it. What was, was there something wrong with the cement or?
Are you looking at the existing pump house or where, where exactly?
The, the new one.
Oh, on the front? Yeah. I think that there was, you know, sometimes things don't match the plan and then they get removed and rebuilt. We don't pay twice for that, but they've got to meet the spec. And there's some roof drainage issues with that one, too, where water was coming down and, and falling on that, that we want to see water draining away. And some things that you think are good on plan until you actually build them. And then you got to get them working right in application.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Director Hopkins? Great. Assistant Mayor Stube Fossen.
Thank you, Council. Ann wanted me to update you on the most recent lower foundation contribution to some city park infrastructure. The Landry Youth Football has put in a lower grant for lighting at what we call the Legion Field for $27,000. We've been trying to figure out how to get this lighting updated for the last few years. And the youth football has been gracious enough to ask for that for a lower grant. I did drop a grant pre-application in your shared drive. So if you have any specific questions on that, there is a cost analysis and the pre-grant application in your shared drive.
Any questions for our assistant mayor?
Well, that's just the Ann's. I have to keep going.
Keep going.
So in the, the grant realm, the TAP grant, and that's Transportation Alternatives Program through YDOT is due July 15th. This year, we've determined in conjunction with YDOT, in concert with YDOT, that we will apply for Phase Two of Gannet Peak. Gannet Peak was scaled back to about half of its original project because of the time value of money and the inflation that we've had. So we are waiting for some additional costs because YDOT asks that we add some additional ADA ramps in the area. But the Phase Two grant application that we will apply for July 15th is going to be somewhere between 1.5 and $2 million for sidewalk improvements and ADA around the remainder of Gannet Peak. We're not applying for any new federal funding, but there, we're utilizing two state federal pots of money that don't require any match for us. One is the Brown Fields redevelopment and that, you guys saw some of that in the master plan regarding the depot building. You know, what is the best reuse of the depot? Does it have environmentally unsafe things because it used to be a railroad yard? Because it might have asbestos and the age of the building, those kind of things. So we are getting that for free. We've added the Garfield shop and the maintenance shop to that redevelopment assessment because those buildings are also have stored chemicals and are in danger of having some hazardous waste around them. The last one that we're taking advantage of is, is new. It's called CISA, C-I-S-A. And basically, it's a security vulnerability assessment for our cyber and digital activities. That's something that comes through the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security. And so we're tagging onto their free program. They'll come in and do an assessment of, you know, where, where are we in our maturity on managing all our programs that we manage and all our social media? And then they will, the second step, they'll come in and offer suggestions and solutions to make sure that we are completely cyber secure. That is all I have unless you have questions for me.
Great. Questions for our assistant mayor? Regina, I do have one on the DEQ Brownfield Grant. That's an assessment if they find any substances that need mitigation or recommend uses of that building. Are there subsequent grant funds through that program for implementation?
There are. The process that they're in right now, they've hired heirs who did our master plan statewide. They've hired heirs to do these redevelopment plans. So they come in and they do a high-level assessment and tell you what might be the best use for that property or redevelopment for that property. The next phase, should it go forward, would probably be something like hired Phase One environmental, where they're doing asbestos assessments, soil assessments to determine what hazards exist on the site. And then by the time you got to a redevelopment phase, who knows what the funding will look like at the time. But right now, there is a percentage match for any redevelopment Brown Fields fund.
And then the Garfield shop, that maintenance shop, is that primarily Parks and Rec? What departments use that?
Good question.
Yeah, it's a shared facility, but primarily Parks and Rec. We do have some paint being stored down there. Weed and pest is out of that shop. And so all of their chemical is next to that building as well. But shared use, but primary Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Any other questions before we go on to our treasurer? Treasurer Laura.
I have the auditors here testing, so good times for me. That's all I have.
Attorney, or I'm sorry, questions for our treasurer? Attorney Phillips.
I don't have any updates tonight unless somebody has questions for me.
Any questions? And Clerk Fontaine?
Thank you. Just a couple of topics I'd like to talk about and seek some direction on. House Bill 0172 was passed and that, that particular law talks about concealed carry permits or just concealed carry. It's, let me see what they call it. They call it the repeal of the gun-free zones. When we were in WHAM, there was a discussion about that topic in terms, and what caught my eye was in terms of employee guidance. So if we have employees, and I don't know that we do or we don't, that want to conceal carry and, and wear their gun to work or things like that. It was my thought to provide a policy that we would add to our employee policy about what that looks like in terms of if you work at the water treatment plant, for example, where there are explosive chemicals, then by law, perhaps you have to have that in a biometric container, things of that nature. School District One just went through this process, I saw. The law goes into effect July 1st. It wouldn't have anything to do with council meetings. People can, can bring it. We don't screen for that now as far as I know. Mostly just be guidance for our employees about if they want to conceal carry, what that looks like and where they would have to put their gun away and where they could have it on them. I touched base with Adam about that today because you've gone through that with some of your entities. So something perhaps we want to investigate and I'll put some language together for the council to consider. Also, we are still working on Title II, the liquor licensing. There was a new type of liquor license passed this year. It has to do with, it's called a resort hotel liquor license. So I need to incorporate that into our proposed ordinance changes as well. I had a meeting with Councilmember Dan Hahn, who, who provided some really helpful guidance on what, what might be good to incorporate into our ordinance when we redo it in terms of a roadmap of if there's a perceived violation, what does that look like? Then I met with Captain Wa afterward and Ray Jean, and we talked about how to incorporate that. So that will be coming before you as I get a chance to, to work out some of those details. I didn't want to bring it to you sort of half-compiled. I wanted it to be a little more readable. The other thing I had is kind of along policies. I'd like to bring forward a fraud policy because we don't cover that at all. What we have, an artificial intelligence policy, a social media policy, and maybe ADA because we also don't talk anything about the ADA. We don't have, so if an employee had a disability, what do they do and how do they go about doing that? So we may see those going forward if council's interested in me providing them something to look at.
What, what did you call that policy, a frog policy?
Fraud policy. Yeah. If, if we were to suspect fraud or any of our employees would. Yeah. Fraud, not frog.
Okay, there we go.
Although I like frogs, but.
Some are poisonous. We have to worry.
I'm sorry, I'll try and articulate a little more clearly.
That's Clerk Fontaine with those, the last ones you listed there. Would that be amendments to the employee manual?
Yes, they'd be additions approved by resolution by this council once you. Yeah.
That's a lot of policy rewrites on your plate. Thank you. Other questions for the clerk? All right. Well, seeing none then, let's jump into our agenda. Thanks, staff, for those, those updates and questions. The first item we have here, or second item, I'm sorry. Item B is looking at a proposed tree board ordinance or urban forest council ordinance. And I think I get the pleasure of introducing this, but I'll certainly look through a few other staff members for help with the details. You may recall, Council, that when we appointed the Urban Forest Council, the Tree Board last summer, we tasked them with two main projects to start with, and that was establishing their own bylaws and how they're going to be organized and govern themselves. And then secondly, take a look at the fact that we had three ordinances spanning, what, four to five decades? That had a lot of redundancies, some inconsistencies, and just general amount of disarray. So we asked them to do this housekeeping task of take the three that we have on the books and come back to us with an updated and clearly understandable policy that reflects also the best practices of Tree City USA. So the Tree Board took this on and spent a few months diving into the existing ordinances, looking at those best practices from Tree City USA. They consulted with State Forestry, the representative who's here in town as well, and came to us with a draft, which then staff, including our Parks Recs Director, Kevin Green, our Assistant Public Works Director, our Public Works Director, our attorney and our clerk. And I don't think I've forgotten anybody. Oh, and Chief of Police as well. It was a good crew. Took a look at the draft ordinance that the Tree Board had crafted and, and put those kind of polished touches on it. So that's what you see here before you tonight. Take, we'll look forward to it. Questions, I would say there's not substantial changes in authorities. If you see in this ordinance something that the city is allowed to do, for example, in the case of a hazardous or unsafe tree on private property, those were existing authorities in these ordinances. But we have clarified some roles and responsibilities among staff and among the Urban Forest Council or Tree Board. We can use those interchangeably as well. I think that's what I wanted to cover in my introduction. Director Hopkins, is there anything you wanted to add there that I didn't touch on before we do questions?
No, I think you did a great job. I mean, this is a board that reports to the council. It was previously a board that we had that went away. And then these individuals approached Mayor Richardson about re-establishing this board and thought that they could be of some benefit and then consolidating the three different ordinances into a best practices. And I think eliminating conflict, getting down to one, something that's solid. And then they're going to be giving you guys an annual report and then recommendations. And so I think they're not a hands-on board. And then our staff is going to interact with them and hear what those recommendations are and then try to see if there's ways that we can work on your guys' wishes. But ultimately, we have to build that into being able to find budget or enact some of these things or find enforcement. So we're kind of all looking at each other, I think, with all those individuals in one meeting. And some of this is, okay, how do we add this to our regular jobs and make this work? We've got a great board out there that's going to be making suggestions and what to add to new parks or what type of tree species may be best here or somewhere else. But great information. And then we have to figure out how to take that in and, and make that happen if that's the wish of the council.
Thank you for that additional context. Council, I'll turn now to discussion and questions on the ordinance itself. And of course, you'll recall that with any ordinance, we'll have three readings to actually approve this. So we have plenty of time to continue learning and debating it as well. But what comes to mind with this first draft? Councilman Larson.
Well, the, the thing that I seen and, and was really pleased with is that, you know, you're not promoting Russian olives and, and that kind of stuff, you know, to be, be planted along the, the, the park and creeks and so on and so forth. So that's good. And then I also noticed that the insurance requirement for arborists had been updated where it should be, you know, 50,000 to, you know, 900,000 there back in the early 90s. That doesn't go very far for, for liability anymore. So when they updated that, I was, I was pleased with that, but I, I think that it's, looks good to me.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Other responses to this, questions? Or comments? Yeah, Councilman Hahn.
I think originally the Tree Board, you know, they, they've done a real good job. I was on it for, for several years and, and I had a lot of fun. They, they produced some wonderful results. And, you know, at the time, they were, they were taking care of all the, the, everything for the city of Lander. But I, I have, I have a problem with, with the board policing the citizens of Lander and their trees. Sometimes boards, well, one of the, one of the problems with boards is, is they're, they're revolving. You know, there's, there's a lot of people coming and going. And if we establish this, you get a lot of different, you know, people thinking on what, what, what is right and what is wrong. And, and what I would like to see is, I'd like to, I'd like to see it stay the way it is. I know that, that they, this board, the way it sounds, the like, this board is supposed to come to the council and, and then we're supposed to vote on everything. But I'm not so sure how, you know, that, that's going to go. I mean, especially if there's, we have a lot of tree issues in town. So my personal opinion is I'd like to keep it the way it is. I think that we need to keep Lander's trees under the mayor council and the, and the city administration. I think, I think they've been doing a pretty good job. And, and the Tree Board concentrate on the city property. So that's, that, that's my, that's my take.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. I think I'll take the privilege of replying to that. Certainly, the Tree Board does not want to act in any way that's beyond advisory. So they have no intentions or desires to do any kind of policing or enforcement. In fact, I think they were very much looking for that to be a city staff role if that's needed. And I think that's really rare as well. I mean, this is when there is a hazardous or a tree, a hazardous tree or something that's causing a safety issue to the, the public. Is there a section that you can point us to here? Because the way I understand this and the development and what we have before us, that authority is still within city staff and not coming to council or the board itself. So I think the way, this scenario that you've just laid out that you prefer, I think is what this reflects. It's really intended to.
I, I, I have a lot of mixed emotions. You know, one of the, one of the things, we do have a lot of problem trees in town. And to tell you the truth, I'm not sure how we're going to cure all this. To, to have an arborist come in and do one of these large trees, you know, is up to $10,000. And the way this is written, if, if the Tree Board comes and says, hey, okay, this is a problem here. Comes to the city, they get X amount of days, 30 days. And then, and then after that, if, if something hasn't been taken care of, then the city has the option to go in and take care of, of business. What are we going to do if this is, you know, $10,000 worth of, of business? And these people have no money. I mean, there's a lot of people. I mean, this, this could really, really, that's my biggest concern. I mean, I, I, I just, I, there's, there's big trees everywhere. And I assume that the, most of them are grandfathered in, but it's the, it's the what ifs on where this is going to go. I think that scares me because there's a lot of people that are not going to be able to afford. And if we go in and, if we go in and, and if we go in and cut trees and they don't have money, what are we going to do? What do we do? What are our options?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman. Attorney Phillips, I see you.
I mean, some of the options are we can take a lien against the property because we had to do the work and so that we could secure our, the funds that we spent on taking care of these trees. And obviously with a lien, that's only realized if they're property of ourselves. If it gets to an extreme position, then we could pursue some sort of litigation and force a sale of that property to be able to collect our funds. But you're right. I mean, it's not a perfect situation, but we find ourselves in this situation a lot with dilapidated buildings, with things like that. And so we have to have options. We have to do something. And this is what we were able to come up with. So I hear your concerns and I, I understand them, but we have to enforce our ordinances and our rules. And if you look back, in fact, I was looking at our old ordinance and we, it had an enforcement policy in the previous ordinance that's almost similar to what we came up with. So this has already been in place for years. We were just trying to get rid of the redundancy by having two separate ordinances that said almost the same thing. And so it's been around, and I don't think it's the Tree Board that's going to be enforcing this because that's not how this is designed. The, it, in all this language on the, on the, on the various ordinances, I never saw fines. Now we're, now we're talking about fines. Do we have a? No, I'm sorry. Which ordinance are you, you speaking of? Well, I didn't see anything in 842 and, and what was the other one? I don't remember something. Yeah, there was, there was three of them, but I, I didn't see an actual fine. Do we, we have a fine schedule? So Section 11915, which was in ordinance. 854 had a penalty. So we just tried to define what the penalty would be. So, so as of, so basically what's going to happen is, is if this passes, then we, then we write the language of the. So we, we took these two ordinances and combined them and made one ordinance to replace these two. Okay. Is what we're trying to do. Okay. We're trying to, we're, we're trying to get rid of the redundancy. And I think you understand that. Yes. But we had to define some of these things that were vague because otherwise, what's the point of having a vague ordinance? And so in order to enforce this, I mean, I guess we're open to suggestions on what the council would like to do. But generally, we enforce by fine, by misdemeanor. I mean, we had to have some way to enforce our codes.
Councilman Hahn, I think I'd add to that, your statement that if this passes, then we would have this ability. We have this authority already. This is in the existing ordinance. The, you know, if you look at 1015, a section 1199, you're assessing this at the expense of the, of the property owner. Again, I think these are really, really. Again, I think these are really, really rare circumstances where there actually is a threat to, you know, of harm to somebody in the public or some city property.
Well, I was, I was wondering about the, this new where it says the, the citation and fine is outlined in the city. I guess I don't see the city fee schedule. Is there?
Yep. Are you on section 7D, Councilman Han? In the new section?
Okay.
We did add as outlined in the city fee schedule to this ordinance that wasn't as specific in the existing ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
So we would need to turn to that as a matter of policy after we pass this, you know, we can't get that part of. I've seen Councilwoman Cox with a question.
Yeah, just a couple of comments and, and thank you for that. But there, it, it did talk about in the old ordinance, eight 54, that there was a reference to a city code section one dash two dash one in, under the penalty phase. Cause I as well was drawn to that. And that's it, a similar language in the new ordinance as well, because it outlines it and reflects to the city fee schedule. So my question is, in that penalty phase in the old ordinance, eight five four, in city code section one dash two dash one, is that also referencing city fee structure? Cause I, I did not look that up.
It's going to be a race on Unicode right now to answer that question.
I just wonder if the language is the same as, as defined in the fine is outlined in the city fee schedule.
So our code, our title two, our title one, uh, dash two dash one is our definition of violation of ordinances. Violations of the municipal code of the city of Lander are misdemeanors or unless otherwise stated upon conviction shall be punishable by a maximum fine of 750.
Okay. So it's essentially referencing the same thing as the new ordinance would reference it within the city fee schedule.
Well, the fee schedule would have that fee included, but perhaps not the language about misdemeanor.
Well, but the language is provided in the old one to the, up to a fine of $750, which then if you look at, uh, section D, that does allow for language that states upon a citation and a fine is outlined in the city fee schedule. And if you know, the city fee schedule at one time at least, a misdemeanor was punishable by up to a fine of $750. I didn't know if that increased because I could not remember if that 750 has been increased at all.
I'm going to send that question to Attorney Phillips.
It, it has not increased from misdemeanors.
Okay, thank you. That, so essentially it's better language within the new ordinance, but it's the same language from previous ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Other comments and questions?
I just,
Councilman Larson.
I, I just wanted to make the comment that, uh, that these assessments are done for safety reasons only. You know, it's not just because, hey, you've got an ugly tree and, and I'm being arbitrary and capricious and want to kill your tree. The arboretary and capricious. And, and so, uh, there, there has to be some reasonable, um, concern, you know, with the tree for, for it to even come, come about.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I would, I would say there's fairly, fairly, uh, a high level of safeguards against that possibility. So one, you have an advisory council of folks who are acting in the best interest of the city who come to city staff saying, we've identified a tree, we have some concerns or some questions about it. The city staffer then going to go through and make their own assessment and agree whether or not that's safe, right? Or hazardous. And then you go through the process outlined here. So I think there's, um, you know, again, knowing that most folks act with good intentions and a high degree of reason. I think we're, we're going to be protected away from the, uh, the A and C concerns that our attorney often has.
And, and if I may, counsel.
Yes, Attorney Phillips, you may.
How do we call you, uh?
Don't worry about it.
President? Anyway, I, I, I mean, this was designed so that we don't have all of the, directly to the council and saying, we have this issue with a tree, what are we going to do with it? And so what this does is allow an intermare intermediary board to address the situation. And if it has reached the level where they aren't able to work with a property owner or a business owner that has these issues, then they have a mechanism to say, we did everything we could here and we can't do anything else. And therefore we have enforcement rights, but that will be done through the police department to be able to do code enforcement, not necessarily this board. This board doesn't have that authority. Does that make sense?
I think it does. I think I want to spell out one thing if I may, that, um, that the tree board does not have that authority. And in fact, what they would do with the property owner is just a educational conversation.
Exactly.
We have some concerns, it's the way we've identified, what can we do about it? And there's a process laid out here.
And I think they want to, from what I understand, they want to work with these people.
Absolutely.
It's not like they're coming down on anybody and we don't want to be arbitrary and capricious.
We do not.
With our arbers.
And worth noting too, that in section seven, seven point C, there is as a standard for a lot of the city orders, we do outline the process of if that property owner wants to, um, disagrees with that order and wants to get a set, you know, get a second arbiter on it, this does go to the board of appeals as well. So you have again, another, yet another fail safe, I think, or, or safeguard for folks to review and make sure that it's being done with, you know, the correct intentions within reason and, and properly.
Counsel President Stube, I do have another comment.
Yes, Councilwoman Cox, please proceed.
And it basically came up because I, I own a hedge that interferes with the line of sight for, um, traffic, which I've pruned. However, it doesn't, I didn't see in the ordinance language, and I know we've had this problem before when it becomes interference with like a stop sign or any other visible barriers that it causes. Are we, are we interested in including that in this or is that covered in another ordinance?
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Cox. I'm going to do a quick review and, and Director Hopkins, if you could as well. I believe we addressed that in here and if we just find the section. I do know we, uh, defined this as applying to boughs, branches and hedges. So hedges as well as trees.
Yeah, I see the easement thing here.
Director Hopkins, do you recall where this?
Yeah, and that's what I was going to point out, you're in seven A at the end of it, where you're talking about overhanging public rights away or easements. And so, uh, you know, a lot of that is alleys and overgrown and, you know, trying to make sure it's not in utility rights of way. But maybe there needs to be something more directly with line of sight on corners that you're recommending. So I don't think it specifically says that. I mean, we could deem it as a hazard because you can't see, uh, but that is some of our issue, these stop signs that get overgrown and get missed and people are flying into traffic. And we need to go on and prune that up or ask the homeowner to prune that back. I think some of what we're hoping is that the homeowner could get contacted, do it their way versus maybe the way the county, you know, drives down the road and just puts out the mower and levels the right of way or, um, you know, us going in and then not doing it the way the homeowner likes. So this gives them the opportunity before we go and, and have to trim or at least be able to talk and communicate with the property owner on some of this. So I agree, we might be able to strengthen that, that sight distance. And we do have that in other places on what we want to see. It's on our fencing setbacks. But I think that would probably be good to include, uh, something specific like that in here.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I do see that language in here with, but it is a little bit more vague about line of sight, specifically as it relates to corner properties.
And in fact, if I may, direct our attention to six point C, that's where we're more specific about visibility. Talks about such trees shall be directed for removal or removed by the city if it is impacting curb, gutters, sidewalks, visibility. Rights of. That's the section around tree planting and care. Appropriate in the circumstance you brought up, the in care of that hedge, you have to maintain visibility. But we certainly, Attorney Phillips, what do you think about, uh, moving visibility down into section seven as well?
I don't think that's a problem at all.
You, uh, draft that language and make that suggested change? Please?
We, we can work on it, the staff. We'll get it included. Yes.
Great, so we'll add line of sight visibility to section seven as well, just to be, uh, extra coverage here. We're trying to reduce redundancies, but that might be a good place for good clarity. Councilwoman Cox, does, uh, satisfy your, your catheter and your concern?
Yeah, it does. I just know that we've had this, and I'm saying this another time, but we've had this issue come up periodically with stop signs specifically. And so I just wanted to make sure that language was fairly clear.
Yeah.
Um, because that does become a safety, a much different safety concern than as otherwise defined.
Yep. Agreed. Thank you so much for that catch. That's well aligned with the intentions we have here. Councilman Larson.
Yes, I, I know that I've seen something very similar to that. It must've been in one of the older ordinances where they talked about, you know, the visibility is coming up to the intersection and so forth. But I just wanted to, to give a shout out to the, to the homeowner on, uh, Fifth and, and, uh, Shoshone had that big pine tree there, two pine trees that, uh, I mean, it, it was just a dog to, you know, creep into that intersection. And he went in there and they trimmed that thing up about 10, 12 feet. And it's just so nice to be able to, to pull up there and see where, see what, what traffic is there. And, and, uh, I've, I've told the, the homeowner myself, you know, I said, man, thank you. Cause it, it does, it makes a huge difference. So if we can get that, you know, somewhere in that, that language, that'd be great.
Thank you, Councilman Larson. I think that illustrates really nicely too, that when we look at these kind of ordinances, we immediately zero in on enforcement and the, the worst case scenario of, well, what happens if? The reality is there's a huge amount of responsible property owners in town who are proactively taking care of, right? Their, uh, trees, hedges, et cetera, and making sure it's safe. Attorney Phillips?
And just to add to that, I also think a lot of property owners don't realize how bad their trees are until it's pointed out. And I think that once they realize that they're bad, then they're like, oh geez, yeah, we'll get them cleaned up. Cause they may not realize it's, it's covering up stop signs, covering up sidewalks. They may not realize it. So, and I think that educating them, that's going to be a key with this board to be able to help people in our community to keep their trees up to date.
Agreed. There'll be a plenty of friendly conversations that start with this. Uh, Director Hopkins?
Sure. One more thing in the background, we're still working on franchise agreements. And we do grant authorities for power companies and utility companies to maintain those easements and right of ways and to trim back as well. And I'm going to bounce this off of our franchise attorney we're working with. But I think the utility companies may be using that rider that we grant them in order to go in, trim alleys and clear power lines and do other things. So an ordinance like this is critical so that, uh, people can have services and they don't get overgrown or we don't get trees and limbs knocking down power lines as well. So if we don't have something like on, like this on the books, I'm not sure how we grant that authority in our franchises to maintain and operate in easements and public rights away.
Thank you for that addition. Other questions and comments, concerns? We'll have a few more bites of the apple here. Great. Councilman Han, um, given your concerns that you started with around how we don't want this to be intended and used, let's keep talking, you know, as we go through this process to make sure, because I think this is designed to avoid the scenario that you are worried and concerned that it could lead to. So, um, let's keep having that conversation. Okay, great. I'm glad to hear. Well, plenty more, yeah. Plenty more opportunities to talk about our trees to go. Are we happy to leave this as is with a few changes we've discussed? And we'll see it again at a coming regular session then. Okay. Thank you all. The next item on our agenda, yes, Councilman Han, uh, sorry, Councilman Larson, Director Hopkins?
So, uh, Hunter texted me and says that we cover sight distance on 1196. And so that's another ordinance we want to cross check, but we'll do our work and homework and see if it makes sense to reference what we already have in ordinance or, uh, to repeat it here. So, um, happy to have good help.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you, Assistant Director, from the audience. Our next item of agenda, our agenda item is also to a degree, housekeeping, uh, and checking in and updating some, uh, policies and manuals that we have on the books. So let's start with the police department and we'll separate this into, uh, C point one and C point two. So we'll do police and then we'll talk about employee manual updates. Uh, interim chief Waa, if I could turn to you.
So Rochelle's added policy to your drive for you guys to access. There's also, should be about a three page, the best possible scenario. I understand that the council prefers, this is what it used to look like and this is what it looks like now. But we've gone from 98 pages to 430 pages. So it's almost impossible to do. That was then, this is now. So the, the story of where this policy comes from is it, I've been very vocal that my intent is to make Lander Police Department the gold standard of policing, not only in Wyoming, but across the nation. The basis of this comes from Kalia. Kalia is the Commission of Accreditation on Law Enforcement Agencies with the additional help of the Daigle Law Group. The Daigle Law Group specializes in, um, constitutional policing policies, procedures. A lot of it comes down, I'm probably, I'm comfortably would tell you that we're 90% there with this policy. But I want it in front of the council sooner, not that we're just dropping it on you and asking you for a vote. I want you to have time to go through it, look at it. It's, it's extremely lengthy as it appears, but it's similar in the sense of what we did with title two. In the fact, we've added a lot of legal and law to the policy that follows what the policy is. Search and seizure laws, laws of arrest, those types of things that we cover in our policy. We've also added the statute and things that supports those. If you look at our old policy, it was very vague. There was a lot of just generalized terms. And I think at some point we have to have a little bit of concern of if we do not identify a policy, what our policy is and why we follow it. In, in a worst case scenario, it's, that's prima facie evidence for negligence on our behalf. So we, my intent is to very define procedural, um, responsibilities, accountability. I ask that you spend a little bit of time in it and, and understand what it's for and, and how we're moving forward. There's a lot, I understand it because I did the whole thing. Trust me, I know there's a lot, but this is something that I kind of started when I was first hired as the captain. And, and as I've moved into my current role and some things that we've dealt with. I mean, we can refer back to our social media issue that we had with, some of those things are clearly defined on who can do that and who can't do that. And there's a lot of things covered in training, requirements of training, that you're required to be trained in certain things before you're allowed to do certain things. There's a lot about, um, oversight and training as well as what your authority is in your position to where you remove any kind of bias as far as supervising or any of the authority that you think you have. It's very clear cut of what's expected, why it's expected, and it's supported by law and, and policy.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilwoman Cox.
Thank you, uh, and thank you for that update. My, my only hesitancy with any of these changes, and so I'd like a timeline is, you know, obviously we haven't gotten to the point of formalizing the chief yet as far as I know. So are, are these changes we need to make before that happens? Or do we wait until that's formalized? What is the process or what is the best process for really doing a deep dive into these new changes?
I guess my stance for you, Councilwoman Cox, is the Lander Police Department is currently operating under policy that was ratified last by you from 2015. One, that gives me a stomach ache to, to know that there's anybody that's not law enforcement related and you yourself have more education with the law than most people here. But 10 years of us not changing policy. And again, my intent to get it in front of you today is so you can start to see what's there. You're not voting on it today. We're not saying, yes, this is it for sure. We're just beginning the process and I would, I would venture to think whether it's me or somebody else that takes this permanent position, they're going to have the same stance on. We've got to be able to define what our policies are, what your authority is, what are the laws and rules that, that support all of the things that we're doing? I mean, we've got to start somewhere and this has sat idle, in my opinion, for way too long.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. That helps. Can I ask a clarifying question of that as far as, because I don't have that in front of me and I apologize. It's an operator error, not because I didn't get the information. But is the, is there body cam coverage within our current policy?
There is not, there's no body camera coverage. There's nothing about, as I've mentioned before, and I would like to re-mention now, if you're not aware, after, we have one currently operating by the end of July, we should have five to six of them operating mobile data terminals that they will have in their cars, that they will have access to NCIC and things like that, which you understand. If you guys don't, that's the National Criminal Information Center where they have to take tests and have to be authorized to have access to that. So a lot of this new policy covers the rules and regulations with those things, what they can, what they can't do with them, the fact that they're using, uh, department issued or city issued computers either in their car or at their desktop for their own social media. There's just a lot of things like that that are not currently covered, that's not good.
Yeah, it, thank you. Yep, I, I do appreciate that information. Yeah, it, thank you. Yep, I I do appreciate that information.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cox.
Thank you.
Other input, questions, comments? Uh, Councilman Larson?
Excuse me, in in our drive, there's a LPD policy twenty twenty-five docs, and then there's also a PDF Lander Police Department policy, which which is the new one, or are they both new ones and I just gotta slog through them or what?
Ask Rochelle, she does that. I'm not that savvy.
The Word document, Councilman Larson, is the um the new policy about talking in around four hundred pages. And the, I only see one PDF, which is a summary, but sort of Fontaine, is there?
So the LPD policy that's in, that's a Word document is the full four hundred and thirty-something pages. I just opened it to sure. And then there is a PDF that is called Lander Police Department Policy Update Change, which is the three-page comparison between the twenty fifteen manual and the twenty twenty-five manual that was provided by Captain Wa.
So the PDF, sir, is the summarization of changes?
Okay.
Just kind of cut and dry, that breaks it down. The Word documents, the four hundred plus pages.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions and comments for this first phase of review for us? A thought that occurs to me, Councilwoman Cox, to your question about considerations of waiting or not for a uh the selection of a permanent chief. It occurs to me, one, if I was an officer in the department, knowing that I'm operating under more vague outdated guidance, I don't have the cover perhaps of uh updated policy that could be helpful in some circumstances. I'm also, I take some heart that now first time I've learned about Kalia, but in the, you know, last few days, reading through this, understanding it, it seems like that would be a standard we would want as policy direction, uh even in, you know, with that that hire. And so I hope, and I understand to be a gold standard, that that's fairly non-controversial, that we would hope and expect somebody to come into the chief position who is versed in that and and backs and agrees with the the direction of Kalia. Is that?
Yeah, that's the stance. And and again, I guess, just to black and white clarify, none of this policy is my personal policy that I have wrote, right? I I've used Kalia and I've used the Dagle Law Group. There's actually uh Councilwoman Cox, you're familiar with WASCOP. This is something that they've put on Power DMS as one gigantic sample policy manual, free to all Wyoming law enforcement that are members of WASCOP, to use at their discretion. Um, the one that they've put on there is clearly written for probably a four to five hundred man agency, which clearly is not us. But this is just kind of the standard in in the industry now of being very clear and concise on all of our policies and what we're doing. I think a- as much as we've ran into it in Title Two and and other areas in the city, there's been some issues within the police department, even before I filled the role I'm in now that there's no policy that clearly rectifies or clarifies, how do we move forward, what can we do, what can't we do? And not knowing what the policy says and not knowing how it's written out of what they're supposed to do, we fall back into, what do we do next if we have no direction?
Thank you, Interim Chief, and I would especially highlight there that in our twenty fifteen policy, um, the ethics and discretion are not uh fully specific or deeply explored in the way that they are now. And I certainly if I'm wondering about my discretion as a police officer, I would want that to be much more clear in what I can do instead of uh instead of sort of more vague. I'll also comment that I'm pleased to see an update here that takes into account the expectations that the last ten years have brought in terms of transparency, public trust, how do you build accountability? Uh, and how do we um communicate with folks in our community about what we expect of our police department, how they're going to act? We're transparent in this way with this policy, setting those standards. Um, and so those are clearly, there's a quite a bit of attention in the last decade to how to establish that degree of community trust, and I'm I'm glad to see that we're taking real strides in that direction uh with this policy, what's in it, but also this process here today, right, the transparency of of having an open meeting about it. I will add that it's obviously a serious document for us to review. Policy decisions by the Board, uh, through Fontaine would be a single vote. Is that correct?
Yes, it's adopted by resolution.
Great, thank you. So given that, Council, what's your pleasure in terms of returning to this document? Seeing again, what timeframe are you interested in before we get to the resolution and the approval vote? Next week's okay, I think?
Oh, I
You, Councilman Larson, a little longer perhaps than usual?
Sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear that, but I I mean, at least a month. This is a, this is a very serious document that should not be taken casually, and we need some time with it. Not, it's a long document. I guess, I guess, oh, because we have our next business meeting in two weeks, right?
Yep, there's no rush here, I don't believe. And I, interim Chief Wa, if I could ask, um, you're looking at doing a a final ten percent cleanup here too, right? This is a
I am, but I think if you look at what's left there, quite uh quite honestly, it's some formatting and some titling issues and numbering issues. But again, the intent to get it to you now is exactly that. It's four hundred and thirty-some pages. It's a lot. It's it's absolutely a lot. And if we ended up in the window again, hopefully we don't, that this is the policy for the next ten years. You you should be sure that this is what you want for the next ten years. Some of the numbering and some of the formatting I haven't completed, just in the sense of if there's alterations or different things you want in or out of the policy, it's gonna change the formatting and things like that. So this is the meat and potatoes of what it is, but I wanted to get it to you because I know how big it is, I know how inclusive it is. I know that there's a lot to go through, and I really, if I have my vote, it's at least a month. The council really needs to understand that what they're approving is the new policy and the rules and guidelines that these guys have to follow. Councilman Larson, you can put it in chat GPT and push play and it'll read it to you.
That doesn't mean I'm paying attention. And 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 that's the other thing, you know, is that uh I I can, I can read through this four hundred and thirty-eight pages there, Chief, but will it, will I understand? You know, I I guess that's why I'm relying a lot on you and those that's a lot smarter than me on on these type of uh situations, you know, to uh uh to help me you know, not ne- not necessarily take me by the hand and show me what every word means, but to say, okay, this is good or this is bad.
Well, and I think that's the intent, right, of why we put people in the city in the positions that we do, because we trust them and that's their role and that's what they understand. So but again, I I've said it with training, I've said it with anything with the police department, anything about this policy that you need clarification or you have questions or eh you don't understand, please just reach out to me. Every one of you knows how to get ahold of me. I would be happy to sit down with you in person or explain to you over the phone why the policy says what it says and and then tend behind all of it. I mean, that's, that's an open door, phone, window, whatever you want to call it anytime.
And if we have a month for those conversations uh to happen, as well as digest and read uh this version? Are we comfortable with, if we look at a month that would actually, for our next regular session, that would bounce us forward into very early August for a resolution, are we comfortable with that timeframe? We'd vote in early August on this policy? Okay, yeah, agreed, yeah. Councilman Larson, do you want it to come back to a work session or or are you comfortable with the processing it and conversations with interim chief and others as applicable between now and the vote? And others, that's all council question?
All of this, I generated it, but it it's also gone to Rochelle, and ultimately, I'm, uh, she's spent a little bit of time with it because no matter what she tells you, she she has so much free time in the day, it's not even funny, but
Started, I think I'm on page twenty-five, but I'm working on it.
But an intent in the end of it is, is it comes here, it goes through Rochelle. At some point, I'm sure Adam will put eyes on it to be sure that we're all kind of right in the right place where we need to be. So, I mean, and eh again, it's up to you guys to vote it, but just understand it's not my individual product. It's Kalia, it's the Dagle Law Group and it's your staff that they're part of the city that overlook all of it.
Thank you for that. I'm also mindful that we're uh having a discussion on this uh first review without Mayor White and without Councilman Cassidy. And so I think again, Council, I'd look for your direction of, do we come back to a work session, or do we take a month and come to a vote? We we do, yeah, late July. Would you prefer to come back there further a look? Okay. Seeing some head nods. Councilwoman Cox, we'll readdress this at the work session in July after another staff review and we have more voices at our council. Great, you're nodding. I hope not. Uh, interim chief, any further final comments on this before we turn to the employee manual?
No, I have none unless someone has questions.
Well, thank you. That's a certainly an immense and important document, so excited to take the time with it that we need and hear from those with expertise also in our community who have time now to weigh in with us. Let's move then, Council, to our final item, um, an update to the employee manual, and Clerk Fontaine, if you would introduce us, please.
And I think, oh, I'm sorry, were were you going to speak to that, Sharie or?
Treasure Laura, thank you.
Um, you probably remember at our original budget meeting that we had for the budget that we just approved, we talked about correcting the on-call wages. Um, what was happening was uh every time that an employee worked their on-call wages on a normal week, the payroll clerk was having to manipulate their overtime hours manually. So it just caused so much room for human error to have to mess with her, that person's overtime hours. So we added what they will, would have normally earned um to work their four weeks on-call to their base salary. So that's a change that it's already in the budget. It was in the budget that was approved, but we're changing it in the employee manual so that it matches what we'll be doing. That way, uh, Kevin won't have to change the overtime rate every time somebody works overtime to add their longevity, their um their uh on-call pay to their base salary. Just too much room for human error.
Okay, let's, there's two proposed changes here for the employee manual, but let's do questions and comments on that one first. So on-call changes. Thank you, Councilman Larson. Any other, Councilwoman Cox?
I have a lot tonight. The only que- I have a couple of questions. Primarily, the overtime pay, does that is that primarily affect the police department? Are there other departments that this heavily affects?
This actually only affected the water department. They were the only ones that received this on-call pay, where they're required to be available um to cover a shift after the normal working hours.
And Treasure Laura, if I may clarify, Councilwoman Cox, you were asking about overtime, I believe. Clerk, Treasure Laura is responding about on-call time. Are you all?
Yeah, we're just talking on call time.
Yeah, we're to, that's, that's essentially what my question was. So thank you for the clarification. So this does, this only affects the water department? This won't go into play with any police department having to they don't have to be on-call. Okay, I got you. That answered my own question. Thank you.
Council or Treasure Laura, it goes into the full employee manual, uh, but the impact here is in water department.
Right, and the water department, the reason why they get, we're getting on-call pay, what was, if there was a water break, somebody had to be sober and available and not out, too far out of town to be able to cover a water break.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, so you had to be available.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this adjustment to on-call pay? Alright, looks like it's gonna clean up a process and make us more efficient, so thank you. Then there's a second proposed change here in the travel reimbursement policy. Treasure Laura?
Um, the travel policy, if you remember a few years ago when we changed this, the credit card company would not let us put um, just bla- send somebody with a blanket credit card. They wanted everybody to have their name on a credit card. Well, we didn't, we don't give every city employee a credit card, so that's why we went to the per diem. Well, now they will allow us to have a travel one card, two card, three card. So what it was doing, if we would have made the employee front that money, it was causing a hardship for your employee because they would have to pay for those expenses and then wait to get reimbursed for it. Um, so this way, they'll be able to take a travel card and be able to use it for their motel, their meals, and get they, we will be looked at so that we're just paying them for the allowable amount for the um GSA rates that are available in that town, but then there won't be a hardship for them having to front the money and then wait for a check to reimburse them.
And it appears, Treasure Laura, if I may, that part of the change here too is that includes a travel approval form, which I think maybe in implementation, if not in policy. But there's a level of review now to make sure the travel is um, okay, okay.
We actually have always had that uh a pre-approval that they have to have, that's signed by the department head, and actually, the mayor usually signs off on that one also. That shows what all the costs are gonna be, their registration, their hotel, meals, so that they're aware of what's in their budget.
So that's not a functional change, but it is specified here in this reimbursement policy.
Yes, we're just laying it out that that is a procedure. But it wasn't being followed everywhere, every time with the same form.
Questions and comments then on travel reimbursement changes? Councilman Larson?
There again, uh, that that's something that uh that we've done personally, you know, in in our businesses, that you can't expect an employee to to go down there and front their own uh own travel for for business expenses. And so I'm 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 glad that you're you're doing it that way. It just makes sense.
Especially when we were sending police officers for a week long.
Yeah, right.
And it was, it was a hardship. So uh it makes it easier now that they allow us to have those travel cards, just to give them a travel card to travel with and pay for all their expenses.
Yep, thank you.
Other questions and comments?
I do, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Can they opt to not have the travel credit card? Could they do either?
Uh, I don't know why they wouldn't want to have a travel card. I, because otherwise, they have to pay for the expenses themselves upfront and then wait for us to reimburse them, where normally our procedure is, we're only cutting checks once a month.
That that was gonna be my next follow-up, is how long does it generally take to reimburse if they request?
Well, you all receive the bills and claims only once a month in that uh meeting, you know, the first of the month, the very first meeting. So it was uh thirty days or more, depending on when they went.
And Treasure Laura, Councilwoman Cox, I'm doing a quick read. It it doesn't feel like we have an or here. It's the all expenses should be paid using a City of Land or credit card, period. There's no option otherwise. Did you want to have that in there?
Oh, for somebody who spends a lot of time on the road for business, um, I would, but in the example I'll give you is that there's lots of financial gain if you travel, if you put it on your, you know, say a United card or something of that nature, so it's just a benefit, but I would, I would think we would want them to have the choice.
And so I can understand, Councilwoman Cox, you would add here, um, shall be paid using a City of Land or credit card and then some statement to the effect of, or shall be reimbursed after the fact with substantiated receipts?
Yes, whatever, yeah.
Post-travel reimbursement. Um, Treasure Laura, Clerk Fontaine, others?
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about those travel points. That's uh, the, that can be a big deal.
I don't think we'll have too many people that will choose that option.
I I don't either.
Yeah.
But I mean
It's expensive to travel.
Yes, it is. It's expensive to eat. But I somehow figure it out just fine, eating plenty over here.
A great-looking hotel you're in. Um, Councilwoman Cox, uh, Clerk Fontaine, did I see you have a comment or a thoughts?
Just a comment that the employee will be required to bring itemized receipts in either event. Eh, and again, no alcohol can be reimbursed by the city, and if someone were to go over the allowable amount, they would either have to reimburse the city or eat that themselves.
That's right.
Is that also, um, they have to provide itemized receipts even though it's a per diem?
Yes.
For per di- for food, they have to as well?
Yes, and this is uh intended to be by meal, for example. So if someone doesn't eat breakfast, there's no breakfast reimbursed. It's just, this is zero.
And that's a change, Councilwoman Cox, from now, where we would pay it.
Yep.
I want to make sure we're clear, Council, that our interest here, that we have the option that um, employees can pay on a personal, through a personal method and then seek re- that employees can pay on a personal, through a personal method, and then seek reimbursement after the fact. You know, we're interested in saying, well, there might be points that they could accrue, and we're okay with that. I just want to ask that question very directly. I know that, at least in my own workplace, there's a real clear statement about like no accrual personal benefit from that kind of a circumstance around points. I can't say I agree, I wouldn't mind, you know, getting some points too. But is there an ethical consideration that we want to have? Are we okay with saying, yeah, you can get that personal benefit of some points if you pay with your own means? Yeah, Councilwoman Han?
Does that create problems, the more options? Does that create problems?
Yeah, great question.
I think it puts a gray, puts gray in there.
It puts a gray area.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because if you look at what an employee should get as a benefit that's not taxable, you know, and if you're getting a benefit on the side and you don't know what that value is, it really should be a taxable item that they have to pick up on their wages. If they've received a benefit or free miles or a free trip or whatever, that should be a taxable item to your employee.
And is there a case, if I, I see Director Hopkins, you're thinking, I do want to ask too, do we, is there a benefit to using the land, the City of Lander card? Are there points accrued on that or cash back that then the benefit?
Only because we earn the cash back. So, you know, as much as we charge, that's why we try to tell people to charge, is because we get the three percent cash back. Yeah, so if you notice on the budget every year, there's like five thousand, seven thousand bucks. That's the benefit that we get for everybody using the city's charge card as a reward. So it's beneficial for the city to have that expense, just to have that amount, that we get that amount.
Some small amount, thank you. Director Hopkins, do, come back to you. Clerk Fontaine, are you, just have your mic on, are you thinking?
I think it's safer just to limit it to city travel cards.
Cleaner.
I don't want to be the, you know, the fun killer, but yeah.
Yeah, it's not a, not a super comfortable conversation. Councilmember Cox, I feel like you're thinking, do you have anything you want to add there? It sounds like we're now leaning against your proposal to add an or.
No, yeah, I think that's okay. I mean, I'm not, that's perfectly acceptable to me for all of the reasons that were articulated, that it would just be a city card, that's fine.
Any final thoughts on that matter? And then, yeah, Councilman Larson?
I just didn't realize it was easy to get so far off in the weeds, you know, just on a simple, simple thing of whether you pay it for yourself or you use the city card. But the the rub bar was pretty close, isn't it?
I'm pleased with the substantive debate we just had. It might have been a little nitty-gritty there, but any other than topics here for the the travel proposed change, travel reimbursement? Sounds like we're leaning now toward no suggested changes to the, no edits tonight to the proposed change that we'll accept. And then Clerk Fontaine, do you intend, no rush, to bring this to our next regular session or August? You know me, I like to get a deadline on there.
Those two seem fine to the council, then I would propose we bring them July eighth for approval via resolution and go into effect with the new fiscal year.
Okay, great. Seeing any.
But I, if if we need more time, happy to do whatever works best for council.
And also back at you, knowing how much policy reviews on your plate as well and other changes or targeted changes we'll look at for employee manuals. Councilman Josh Han?
Oh, I was just, so the police, the police department and employee manual update, so they're separate, right? So we have time to, we can do like the, the employee manual update at the July meeting, and then we can kind of read through the police stuff.
That's exactly right. From my understanding from tonight's discussion, it's one agenda item here, which could be confusing, but we will come back to the employee manual updates, these two, travel reimbursement and on-call time, July eighth, ideally, unless something happens. And then have another work session on the police department manual. Thank you, no good clarification for everybody. Okay, Council, then, I'm sensing we are done with debate for tonight and discussion. Thank you so much. I'm going to call for, we have to vote to adjourn Attorney Phillips, is that right? Saying no, then executive privilege, we're adjourning at seven thirteen. Thank you, everybody.